That's it. Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the call to order the June workshop of the Scamie County School Board. The purpose of this workshop is an open discussion on items brought forth by the board and the superintendent, along with review of the agenda items for our regular meeting. Please silence your cell phones and other electronic devices at this time. If you wish to speak at public forum, you must complete a speaker request form located on the table at the rear of the room and bring it to Ms. Harris at the front. First item of discussion, I believe, is the calendar. If all school board members will take out your calendar, let's look over June and July.
One of the things that-
Yes, sir, Mr. Superintendent.
We would like to request is if the forum available, that we have a board meeting on June 30th for the COPS, at Pensacola PD or Scamie County Sheriff's Office, but our COP series, Certificates of Participation. We would like to be able to do that on June 30th.
June 30th?
Up to y'all, nine o'clock. You know how we have to have the separate meeting?
Mm-hmm.
All that good stuff and June 30th.
June 30th.
This, to be clear, this is the leasing corporation.
Yes.
It's, it's, um, there's our resolutions that have to be approved in order to fund the certificates of participation that are being issued for this year. And so this is for the purpose of the leasing corporation meeting to issue that resolution.
Exactly what we're asking for.
Could we push it to 9:30?
Sure. Yes.
And I did, I did want to also ask the board, we have, for the first time, had a parent file exceptions to hearing officers recommended order. They basically have identified reasons that they don't agree with it. Parents are entitled to a hearing on the exceptions, if they are legally sufficient. Those particular kinds of meetings are absolutely confidential and exempt from any kind of meetings notice as it pertains to student discipline. Obviously, the public does not have the right to attend. Interestingly, there's a provision that allows a parent to make it public if they want to, in which, in which case, we would have to advertise it. But in this particular instance, the parent does not wish to, but they want to address the board to raise the issues that they have with the hearing officer's recommendation. And I, what I would like to request is that on that same day, when the leasing corporation meeting is adjourned, that the school board go into a shade meeting under this, this specific statutory provision to hear the exceptions and to hear from the parent.
What time would you propose?
It, it would be just whenever the leasing corporation. I would defer to Mr. St. Seer regarding how long he expects that meeting would take.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I will not be able to attend any of this meeting. I'll be out of town.
On the, on the 30th?
Mm-hmm.
We say have enough quorum, don't we?
Right, right.
I would also, since we were doing things catch-up, I'd like to ask for an executive session to discuss upcoming bargaining and negotiations and stuff. And can, can the board member attend an executive session by phone?
It is not recommended, simply because there have been instances in which a, a board member attended remotely and there were other people in the room, and that voids the confidentiality. And we can certainly trust people to, you know, abide by that, but we would do so at our own peril. I, I would, I would recommend against it.
When will you be back?
Um, July 5th. July 5th. I know we have a, we have the board training-
Master board training.
On the 9th.
All right.
And 10.
Can we do something before that, that training on the 9th? An executive session for, like, it, it, we're supposed to start at noon, at 11. I work for the superintendent and Ray and Mr. St. Seer. Executive session on the 9th at 11.
At 11, okay. Good, thank you.
Let's back up and be clear about this. We're going through certified board training on the 9th from 12 to 3:00. So you're on the front end of that at 11, an executive session.
Yeah, because we could do it at the back end, but do it at, you know, 3:00. That's a, we'd rather do it that way.
No, I just, I, uh, what you're proposing is fine with me. It's just that I just wanted to be sure that, uh, that I was clear.
Well, I, I just know that there are things coming up and we should have budget from the state at that point and things that need to be discussed and said. I think we all need to be there.
So you say 11 o'clock, you think one hour would be enough?
Yeah, I, I, I'm thinking-
Okay.
And if it's not, we could plan a different meeting after that. But unless you want to do it earlier, sir, if you think we need more time.
That's, I'm supposed to meet with the superintendent. Usually meet with you on that day, at 9:00.
Yes, we meet at 9:30, I believe. The way I, the way I see this particular meeting is just the initial meeting that helps us get prepared for what we need to be doing going forward as it relates to collective bargaining. There'll be a lot of work that takes place between now and you establishing and firming up your budget and then us knowing what we're going to be able to do for all of our employees as we get into '25, '26.
Let's leave it at 11, if that's okay with you. 11 is okay?
About 11?
11 o'clock.
Okay.
Anything else in the month of June before we go to July again?
Mr. Leonard, let me ask if we could go ahead and prepare some time on the 30th for a budget, low-budget workshop preceding or, uh, or after the regular board meeting? Or the special board meeting? The leasing corporation meeting? So we've got, Friday, we got the state allocation for education. I'm gonna touch on it this morning, just touch on it, because I haven't had time to really analyze. But we have a lot of other budget stuff, too, that we need to start working on. And we'll deal with some of that executive staff today. So I wonder if the 30th, we could spend a little bit of time as a budget workshop.
That will have to be separately noticed as a school board workshop. The one at 10 is a shade meeting that does not require advertising.
We'll work our way, it's, there'll be a lot occurring on the 30th, it appears. And we'll make sure we work our way through, making certain that each meeting that needs to be advertised is advertised appropriately. And I would not be surprised if there doesn't end up with other items on the June 30th meeting as you look at this meeting. We had several ads and deletes. It's just a very busy time of year, so we'll work with everybody to make sure we get advertised and updated as we need to. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Bozwell, you sent out the correspondence to all the school board members. Anything in the month of June, anything else in the month of June?
I hate to do this, on, on the 24th, will there be a quorum? I tentatively will not be in town on the 24th, but if there's not enough, I'll try to- On July.
July.
Yeah, I've moved to July. I'm sorry. I 24th has approved a budget for advertising that require everybody or I'm fine.
I'll be here.
Okay.
That's three. Anything else in the month of July? Here and now, we move on to the next item. It's a public forum update, next, Mr. Superintendent, any public forum update?
No, sir.
That brings us to book review process, Mr. Adams, book review process.
A little bowl of water. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had told Ellen about two hours ago, Tampa Bay Times got a big article out on what Orange County, what Pasco, what Hillsborough's doing with the Attorney General's order in the board education. And I, it's been a change of thing. You remember last month, I guess it was on a Thursday workshop, I didn't know the next day what was going to happen, happened, you know? So times are changing. Me and Keith had talked about possible some changes. We're looking at Latchwell County, okay? Because with their system, um, their, their committees make a recommendation. So if it's a recommendation for it to go back in, it has to come to the board, which I think with what we got going on, it'd probably be very wise that we go down the same path. You know, because the five of us are the ones that are going to get charged if there's criminal violation. And, um, we got a, we got a Attorney General. I, I, I believe he's going to be more tougher than Pam Bondi. So he, uh, he has, I think a sheriff in South Florida the other day that was doing one of those sanctuary things, and he got a letter from that Attorney General, and that guy says, "Okay." You know? But if you read the Tampa Bay Times article, it's pretty good, you know? It tells what Hillsborough, Hillsborough's doing, the rest of them. Orange County said they don't want to get in front of that train either, you know? But, uh, so what I'm looking at, because we have an important superintendent, is that this board give the superintendent some direction. And it's also kind of a statement. I made it kind of short. I want to go on to the board agenda, board agenda for tomorrow night. I made it kind of short, but it tells other stakeholders, citizens in Tallahassee, where we sit. Now, I don't know if I'm going to be by myself, or if it's going to be two, but I was going to put it forward. If you'll, let me give Ellen that one. And I will go down what I'm looking at. But, uh, so basically, what I have put on here is to, for the Scamie County School Board, directs the superintendent eliminate all pornographic, age-inappropriate books from the district media centers, as identified on the Department of Education book removal list, without further review. Uh, the second one is, and this is all together, I just broke it off in little paragraphs, but books on the state removal list and local challenges required approval from the Scamie County School Board for its returning back to the media centers. That's the same thing we're talking about Latchwell County. I'm not going to get too far in details, because I know Keith will look at all this and decide what he wants to propose on any policy change. Um, the Scamie County School Board directs the superintendent to delay media center purchases until a process is in place to prevent obscene pornographic, age-inappropriate books from entering the school district. Keith, that's one we talked about, and I, it's up to you, okay? But if you need a pause with what's all going on to get you, get it together, that's fine. But this will show to the state that we are serious, you know? Even if some get in, which I hear is a pretty good amount that we got, you know, it's on the list. So, um, but we, we gotta do everything possible to prevent putting children at risk and undermining parental rights in that process. You know, Attorney General's got that new parental office, okay? Uh, the federal judge wanted us to make the process quicker in motion, and this motion will help speed up that process. I, I love what Keith did, his presentation for us tomorrow night, where he's got that compiled list. He states the reasons, he's recommending those books be pulled. Great job, Keith. That's, that's good. The, uh, I got on here, the board, the board members will be held responsible by Attorney General for obscene pornographic, age-inappropriate materials in our media centers. Also, you know, with the Commissioner of Education and the, uh, and the, uh, board edu-, uh, board education. The, uh, book review committees only make a recommendation, like the Latchwell School District, and the board must approve any recommendation or turn the book back to the media centers. And this is not an 80-20 issue, what I'm getting ready to say, it's a 90-10 issue. And I don't know if you know what I'm talking about. Eighty-six percent for, 10% again, 20% against. No parent wants someone else to indoctrinate their child or introduce their child to obscene pornographic, age-inappropriate content. This is a nonpartisan issue, nonpartisan. I don't care if it's Democrat mom, MPA mom, or Republican mom. They want to know when they go to our schools, their child won't be accidentally introduced to something that they don't approve of, okay? So I, I think we need to get ahead of this issue. It will help if we can get a handle on it, that we don't lose more students to vouchers, because some of these parents are just not going to put up with their child being able to access pornographic material in our system. But, uh, that's what I, I got on the table right there. And I think it'll send a good message to state that we're serious. Give Keith some time to where he can come up with any policy changes. So he thinks it's applicable to get him to that point, that he's not standing in front of the Commissioner of Education, along with this chair and her. You know, it wasn't a fun time for the Hillsborough superintendent. It won't be a fun time for you guys. So, uh, with that, Keith, do you have anything to add on to what I said?
Know that Judge Wetherall has instructed or expects us to do better. I have watched video from the State Board of Education meeting. I've, you know, I've gone there one time. It was about the charter school, one of the charter schools in our, our district. Certainly don't mind going back if that's what's called for, but it's not something that, uh, you know, I write home, write a letter home to anybody. This is, I think, what the conversation you and I had. I think this encapsulates that.
Yep.
Uh, I do know that I talked to other board members. I want to see, uh, there's, I can't remember on this agenda, there's either 17 or 18. I do want you as a board and as a public, since we're in a public meeting, to know that those are books that we have pored over, um, for, for quite some time to, to get to the decision to bring them to you. Uh, when I say we, it's Ms. Vincent and I, going straight through your, your current board policy. Do I think there are some things that are occurring in other school districts? More expeditiously get decisions made? Absolutely, and I think this perhaps will help us do that.
Right.
We've only, this, I think Ms. Burgash and I were talking before the meeting. We've made decisions on 48, and there's 236 or something, something challenges. So I, I would agree with Judge Wetherall, we need to do better. So anything that will help us expedite the process and get us to where we need to go. And I think it's also important to note, we were trying to do everything we could from a school district standpoint to, um, provide a buffer from a political standpoint for you as a school board. We also feel like that's part of our responsibility. This, again, will be a decision that you have to make as a school board, which direction you want us to go. And I really do appreciate the fact that you, you're talking about it, you're letting us know, um, what your expectations are so that we can write a policy and then abide by that policy. And we will do it just as quickly as we, as we can. So thank you for that opportunity this morning.
Thank you, sir. Any other board members?
I'd like to say something. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. The last paragraph where it says media center book purchases, I would like to see maybe something in there to say donations of books. We have some people that may donate books. So I want to make sure that-
You have it on your laptop?
Yeah, to make that change, to include that. Because, um, you know, I'm not saying it does happen in this community, but I know it's happened in other places where people have agendas. They try to come in and they want to expose their children to this type of, um, material. So I just want to make sure that's on the, the agenda as well. As far as, I have, uh, email, received emails countless on both sides. I've received phone calls, both sides. And, you know, I have to look at this from an educator and also as a parent. And as a parent, I would not want my children exposed to anything that may, may interfere with our beliefs. And when I deal with this, we have to follow the law. And, um, you know, if it's, if it's already been reviewed by another state, another county in our state, then why are we reviewing it as well? And I know that-
Motion takes care of that.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it's on the-
Right.
Clay County or anybody else, then it comes off, you know, until somebody up high says it's good to go back on.
Right, exactly. And so, you know, I, I love our review committees. I, I received an email yesterday in regards to these review committees. They're absolutely a cross-section of the community. I've served as a parent representative in Midland High School with other spouses, retired teachers, retired military personnel, grandparents, and engaged citizens. So I do want to keep this, but I caution that, just like Mr. Leonard has said, we received 236 challenged books. Only 48 have been reviewed. So I want to make sure we expedite this as much as possible and give parents that, that sense of relief that, that their children are not going to be exposed to anything that they do not want. Um, so thank you for bringing this, I appreciate it. Um, it takes a lot of common sense, really. You know, we don't want, we don't want to not follow the law. We want to make sure we do follow the law, so.
It's almost a statement from us saying-
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
A proclamation is almost like that, you know?
I think that's it.
Yes, um, I want to say that I support this entirely with additions.
Okay.
Okay? I'd like us to have a statement if we're going to do something, develop some policy, that we do officially say that our media center books must rise to the same level as classroom materials. It's not an exemption-
I have no problem with that.
-in this county. If you did not watch the State Board of Education video when they had Hillsborough Superintendent there, it's one that you won't forget once you do watch it. The State Board, the Commissioner, the Attorney General just are scathing about it. And it says, you know, "Common sense."
Gave them, gave them a week to get to other ones, or they're going to have more charges?
The, the other thing that I'd like to do, and I think that I'm going to reach out to Michelle Salzman as our representative, is that the state take some responsibility to stop the influx of inappropriate materials from publishers. Talk about donations. A lot of books come, things do get ordered, but there's additional things sent in. They didn't ask for them, they didn't even purchase them, they were just sent. And, and those need to stop, but the state needs to stop that. They need to get with the publishers and say, "We're not going to let you be part of our bid process for textbooks if you keep trying to do this to the, the schools and the children of Florida." They, they can put a, nip this in the bud, so to speak. They need to take that kind of action to, to do something, too. I think that we need to move ahead. I like the idea that it is just a review by the committees. The committees, and, and I did what our attorney suggested. She said to look at the books that were up for removal-
I do.
And to make sure that, you know, we have reasons for it. Well, the, you know, the reason being, you know, the superintendent's reason is good, and I agree with it. There was nobody who, no media center specialist who requested the books, so those are easy, okay? But the other part about it is, I'd like the process for the media center to use for any new purchases is, nothing will come in unless it is ordered by that media center specialist and reviewed. And if it's not been ordered by them, it doesn't even darken the door. It could go right into the recycle bin. Then we'll know who's bringing what in and who's not. As, as the State Board meeting talked about, the State Board members were very adamant. They said, they told the superintendent in Hillsborough County, "You should fire every media specialist that you have, because they have done a disservice to the students." That's a little bit ludicrous, it's a little bit off the top, but, but that- Um, that's a little bit ludicrous, it's a little bit off the top, but, but that, that's the flavor of the meeting from the State Board. Um, but I kind of feel the same way. At the very beginning of this process, everybody asked, "How'd they get in here? How'd these books get here? Who's responsible?" And there's not really somebody that you could go back to and you could, can, can say, "Oh, Mrs. Smith is the one who ordered this book." It, it really doesn't, that, that information's not available, I hope. Uh, but if it is, then, then the people need to be told, "You are accountable for the things coming into your media center." And, and you need to step up, change your views, or, 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 or know what the view of the board is and go from there. So I, I'd like us to really to get in line with what the new Attorney General, the State Board, and other districts are doing, and to do it as quickly as possible. I'm, I'm good with taking every one of the books that have, uh, been reviewed, like we said, by other districts and removed, and just automatically they're gone. We don't need to duplicate another committee. Uh, if you feel that we do, and, and I'm in isolation on that, okay. But I also think that, that the, uh, what comes to us, what should come to us as a recommendation from the committee. Because as we've seen, when we were doing the votes, we did not agree most of the time with what was recommended by the committees. Why that is, I won't go into that, I have opinions, but they're just an opinion. But I'd like us to say that, that the, the board will vote on what is going to stay in and what's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fesco, Ms. Harrell.
One, one thing, Paul. Um, you'll see on that first bullet, it says without review, so those temporary books would be pulled off, yeah. Until the state says it's good, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, for bringing this, uh, before the board today. You know, uh, I've wrestled with this issue, uh, through a long campaign, through the last six months, and the thing that keeps popping in my mind is that, why isn't the process moving a little faster and a little smoother? It, it's been bogged down, and in my mind, there's several reasons. One of them is, we have federal lawsuits, two of them hanging over our head, so people were very cautious. Board members were very cautious as a result of that. Now, I'm six months into a term, along with my colleague here, and we've made very little progress on this. We need to move forward. I mean, I always use an analogy of climbing the steps. Well, folks, we hadn't climbed any steps, you know, we ought to be at step fifteen with this process and we're at step one. I agree with what you said, I agree with this motion, and I also agree with the fact that those books have been reviewed by other school districts that we need to, uh, uh, that we need to look very closely at, at removing them. Um, I've talked to the board attorney several times about my personal feelings about this, and I've also, uh, wrestled with this extensively. Uh, but, the bottom line comes to this. Sexually explicit material does not need to be in our schools, period, period. And, uh, I, I would like to include on any policy that we write the following. "It is the intent of this board that there shall be no sexually explicit content in instructional material, supplemental material, library center books, or reading list." Plain and simple. That would go very good in our policy under media center here. And it sends a message out there to our media specialists, to our community, that sexually explicit material shall not be in our schools. When I was looking, we wouldn't allow that if there was a math equation word problem, and, uh, we wouldn't allow sexually explicit material in that. If we had a science project, uh, in one of our science books, we wouldn't allow sexually explicit material in that. I took the attorney's suggestion, and of course I was going to do it anyway, and read through all of those books that are being recommended to them. And at the State Board of Education, they asked the Superintendent in Hillsborough County to read one of the passages, and he refused. And I wouldn't read those passages in some of those books that were there. I, I wouldn't read them here today. And a matter of fact, I believe that there's some rules against that from the communication boards, you know, I'm not sure on that, but I believe there is. I mean, some of that stuff, uh, and some of the images is just not appropriate. This has gone on too long. We are a community that wants the very best for our children. Everyone's not going to agree with this, but I agree with what you're saying. Something else that has crossed my mind, Mr. Adams and my fellow board members. In all our conversations, I heard, I have not heard anything about actions that, for those folks who. I'm concerned that I read, I read books that have been in our media center since two thousand and ten, two thousand and fourteen, that have pictures of sexual acts, illicit sex, language that is so demeaning that it's unbelievable, you know? And some of those books that, uh, we were, that we're reviewing for tomorrow's board meeting have that in it. Uh, our, our community is better than this, we're better than this. And as representatives of that community, it's time for us not to move like the turtle, but like the rabbit. We need to move forward and we need to get these materials, uh, uh, removed. I would like to see some consequences. You know, I would like for our policy to state right up front, right up front, that we, uh, that we're not going to have this. And I gave an example here that I'll be glad to share with the superintendent. But I think that we need to have something like this in our policy also. The Coordinator of Media Services and the media specialist at each school, our center must certify in writing to the superintendent. Put their name on the paper, you know, so that there's consequences. We're not holding anyone accountable for this. And as Mr. Fesco said, we can't go back and look at all of this, you know, uh, and, and find that, but by golly, we can from this point forward if we write our policy right. We are the governing board for the Escambia County School Board. The superintendent is the administer, uh, administrator of that. So we're giving him some ideas today, and this is one that I would like to see included, that every purchase that they make, that they put their name, they're certifying to the superintendent. That it's free of illicit sex and the other things. Of course, these things will have to be defined, they'll have to be, uh, according to state statute. But if we start our policy out with that, uh, then with those words, something similar to what I said, and define it and make sure it covers statute, then we're sending a message out there, and then these media specialists and others need to be held accountable. When I read the reviews from national publications of these books and I read the book, they're nothing like what's in the book. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable.
Some of that stuff's in the book.
They, they make, they, they make the books, some of the books seem like, "Oh, they're so sweet and everything is so nice." And then you turn the page, uh, open the page, and there's graphic sexual intercourse pictures in there, you know, and illicit sex and things like this. Um, I'm on board with what you're saying, Mr. Adams. I would just like to see, number one, that the policy be well-defined up front, you know, right at the beginning, that it go through legal review, that the superintendent, uh, is comfortable and everybody else with it. And then let's, let's make sure that these media specialists, through training and other things, know that they're going to have to sign their name on the dotted line that says that they certified, that they're not violating that policy. That gives the superintendent and his staff actionable items for them during evaluation time and so forth. And so I've probably said enough.
Yeah.
But you know what? This is an important issue, and if it takes two hours, three hours, four hours for us to discuss that, we need, and every board member needs to weigh in on this, this is something that we need to say to our community loud and clear, that we're not going to allow this type of material in our schools. There's too much good and positive other things in, uh, that we can offer to children without that. All right, I'm through, Mr. Williams.
Thank you for your comment. I, I come, come here, I'm not sure which one's next, but I do want to say this, that if we get this right this time, we prevent this from being a problem in our district for, for decades to come. And I think we want what's best for our students in Escambia County accountability as well. Uh, I want to commend the committee and all those, uh, community members who volunteered, well, they, some were volunteered, and recommended, and serving also the superintendent for the job he's done thus far. But, uh, we at a point where we've got to make a decision and move forward, and I appreciate the board for their support in that, that aspect. So I'm not sure who's next, so.
He said several times, so I'm going to go next.
Okay, yes.
The only thing I wanted.
He's had his three minutes.
Just a real quick, the only thing I wanted, because I just need to.
Can I mute, can I mute them?
Point, point of order. Uh, customarily, you let everyone speak before moving on to the next board. Before you speak twice, somebody else has the first, has to have the first.
Go ahead, Paul.
This is my second time though, too, so.
I believe Keith spoke to rights.
But what happened is that Mr. Harrell reminded me when, you know, he, he talked about, he likes analogies. And I've shared this analogy, but I'm, I want to do it again, because I think that our board meetings are watched by the State Board people, by the Commissioner, and by a lot of others. And rightly so, then we're given a lot of influence. The state has to take that, you know, action about the publishers sending stuff. The other thing is, I would like our Attorney General, because he seems to have a real feel for this, to look at what it means educationally in, when they use the phrase "when taken as a whole." Because all of us, or the majority of us, have an education background. We know from the very beginning that we are at a high, we are looked at as having to reach a higher level of, uh, morality, of, uh, of all the things that, we, we are looked at at a different level. The standards for us are above what the general public would be. And I think that needs to be the same thing that goes when we talk about these materials. When taken as a whole, okay? I use the analogy, and I, you could frown when you went, though, Ms. Odom. Uh, many people have seen the movie The Help. That chocolate pie, when taken as a whole, looked delicious. But if you happen to get the slice of that chocolate pie that had, as Larry Downs would say, fecal matters, then when taken as a whole is not something we would want to serve to anybody, to anybody. We wouldn't want us to have it or our kids to have it. And so when taken as a whole does not seem to, to be an appropriate reason, in my opinion, when it comes to educationally appropriate materials. The other way we would do it is with safety. When taken as a whole, you know, a, a school bus is the safest vehicle going. But if they don't put the seat belts on there, or something isn't checked, or something's let go, or say, "Oh, you really don't need that mirror," whatever, the first time there's an accident, when taken as a whole, is going to hurt somebody. So I believe when taken as a whole is not an appropriate defense in materials that have this type of verbiage and depiction and, and just trash. This type of fecal matter does not belong in the books that we're serving to our kids. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, since he said something that I wanted to follow up on, can I, can, will you pass it on to me?
I, I still remember the point.
Mr. Williams, you okay with that? Okay. You know, when I read eight forty-seven repeatedly, I could not find that, and our attorney pointed out to me that it's in the definitions, and then when you read the definitions, that's true. But let me just say this, what you were saying about that, Paul. We as a board can right up front, before anything else, say that we don't want these items, uh, in our schools, you know? That's part of the review process when taken as a whole, you know, and I believe I'm correct on that. The board attorney will correct me if I'm not, but I believe we have the right and the authority under state statutes to say up front that we do not, we're not going to allow this type of material in our schools. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Well, and I would tell you, and, and Orange County, when you go to articles on Temple Bay Times, the, the, the council for Orange County said, "Well, I don't believe those are pornographic." Made a statement, "But I will not differ with the Attorney General." Uh, what they're seeing is, and what I was told over the weekend by somebody, they believe people have been using this as a pass around, a pass-through, to get pornographic material up there. And they said, "This is pornographic, it don't belong there." What, and, and I printed out some stuff. I like to get this out of memory of my printer, you know, of all these sexual acts and pictures of it. No. And, and so, it does, you know, you got the red team, you got the blue team. We got it on the committees and everything. So the blue team thinks this is okay. I mean, it's just the way they think, that's the way it is. You got the red team says, "Oh, heck no, it shouldn't be there," you know? What we got going on now, we got State Attorney General saying it, the Commissioner of Education saying it, and the Board of Education saying it. And, and as I said before, we don't belong in the sexist. We got enough issues just trying to make sure these kids are educated and they, they got a bright future. We don't need this hanging over us. But now, what I was going to say before I forget, Paul wanted to add something on, okay? And if you guys are okay with it, he can get with Elizabeth, she's got the Word doc, to make the change. You want to state again what you, it was on the, um, go by the same standards?
Right, to officially, uh, make it that we would adhere to the media center books the same as classroom books, that, that I'll do a better job of orienting that.
Y'all okay? Okay. All right, and, and I just want to thank y'all. I, I just really think this is an issue that we just need to get on it fast. I, I believe Keith was listening to every one of y'all, and I know y'all will talk to him more, and he'll bring a policy to it. But for right now, this will get us by and show the state we're serious to get these items, that even the Attorney General said should be off, you know, out, out of, out of media centers. Yes.
Yeah, no, just, one more thing, we need to move on.
Yeah, uh, one more thing. I want to also say that I will, I want to be sure that we include up front, you know, whatever policy we have, uh, up front, as I suggested a while ago, and I have some examples here, and also holding people accountable. Now, I don't want to see this happen, what happened in January, February at our board meeting. We talked about a matrix, and most of us on this board, if I remember correctly, were in favor of a matrix, and then it sort of disappeared.
Yeah, Attorney General did that.
This is not going to disappear. This is something that we need to, this needs to be fifteen steps up that ladder I talked about, you know? And soon, and soon, okay?
I agree, I agree. Thank the board. Superintendent, you have anything?
No, only thing I would, I would say is, get it in good bullet points, not in, not in a policy provision. Let us work to write the policy for you, but good bullet points that provides the direction that can take place immediately, because board policy does take time.
And, and that's what I tried to do with this motion we voted on tomorrow night.
What I'm hearing is, too many things perhaps, other than just good, firm, like where it started was just good, firm directive. Don't get yourself down a rabbit trail trying to get everything in one place for Tuesday night.
Oh, no, no, this, this motion, I kept it out of the weeds, but just letting you know that the board wants you to remove all restricted books that are on that list.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and comply with what the.
I, I trust with Ellen and Elizabeth working through it, you'll have it in a provision that gives us clear direction for immediate action that will also provide the opportunity, uh, like I've heard a couple of you say, Mr. Williams and Mr. Harrell, where we don't find ourselves in this position.
Right.
Three or four years down the road.
I, I purposely stayed out of the weeds on that. The biggest thing is, what the state's got, and what the state says needs to be out, is it's on that book in the, in the mother county? I liked what you did for us on that meeting tomorrow night. You stated on there, and you showed the counties that already reviewed this. Um, uh, so those books come off, they don't go another, need another review until the, the state says they're okay.
We need to move on, uh, board, now let's move on to the agenda. Next, we have Mr. Fesco review of DHP conference.
Thank you, I'll, I'll do this quickly. Uh, last week, week before last, actually, uh, the Studer Education, Dr. Janet Pilcher and Dr. Robin Larg, uh, are the CEOs of Studer Education. Although the name is there, I don't know that, that Quint has a lot of, uh, input with it. And the, a large number of people in this audience in, in the past have, uh, been through the Studer training, and by that I mean what he's done with healthcare to improve employee satisfaction and customer satisfaction. So there are departments that have already embraced and are going forward. I know the superintendent is behind this. Uh, I wanted to say that to the other board members that the, uh, DHP conference had to do with, uh, higher education primarily, but the way that people interact with employees and public is the same. And, and so, uh, as we go, um, back into looking at, at some of these, uh, processes and, uh, the, the things that are recommended, uh, I wanted you to know that, you know, if you have a chance in the future, if you've not been part of the Studer training, there will be opportunities through our, uh, professional learning department. Um, and then there are many who have already taken great steps, such as HR, uh, working through this. So, uh, it, it was really good, it was good to see that. Uh, we have the support of, of Janet and Robin, and, uh, Dr. Owens, K.K. Owens, is assigned to work with a lot of our leadership at this point. And so those names in itself carry a lot of weight in knowing that what they're doing is, is valuable and, and good. And so those names in itself carry a lot of weight in knowing that what they're doing is, is valuable and, and good. Um, I, I do wanna thank them for the invitation, for making us a part of it. Uh, and, uh, then, Mr. Superintendent, if there's anything you wanna say about it as far as your desire in this regard?
Yeah, we, you know, after the admin conference last year, we had a couple of sessions with Dr. Owens that went really, really good, as it relates to two items on the flywheel. Um, I wanna go ahead and tell you right now that our admin conference is July twenty-second. All of you are invited. This year it will be at Bailey Middle School. It'll be the first year in a long time, it hasn't been at Washington. By twenty-second. And, um, HR embraced it. Many of our departments and schools have embraced it. I remember my first session, um, with those principals, um, where it, it was at a meeting at Myrtle Grove Baptist Church back years and years ago. Um, but anytime you can make your employees feel like what they do is purposeful and worthwhile work, uh, you can let your employees know they are valued, and they value the experience that you bring as an individual, and you work as a team. Um, doesn't mean each and every day is gonna be great, but each and day can be the greatest it can be. Um, we are very, very fortunate to have them local, so that makes it even better. I wanna say they invited thirty participants from our school district for that last, um, high performance, destination, high performing, uh, free of charge. So there's a lot of things that we get because of our, our, our locale. Um, but I wanna thank several of our leaders for participating and continue to participate. Uh, so it will help us all and get better. Very, 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 very proud of our team. Thank you, Mr. Fesco. Yeah. What was that date again, Ms., Ms. Bennett? July twenty-second, and it's at Bailey Middle School. Oh, if you get there at nine, you'll probably be a little bit late. Breakfast is usually at seven-thirty, and then, um, begin speaking around eight. And I hope I'm close to the times. Yep. Elizabeth, can you send out a reminder on that? Thank you. Any, any other comments on that? If not, we'll move to Mr. Harold. Honoring students who made a max score on the FAS test, flawed assessment of, of, of student learning, thinking. Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Um, uh, what got me started on, uh, this, or looking at this, was when students, uh, I was perceiving it as a perfect score, uh, but, uh, Mr. Bobbitt pointed out that it's a max score. Uh, these are students who made the max score on the FAS test. And each board member has a copy of this. And it was brought to my attention that other districts around the state are honoring these, uh, students at the board meetings. And so I've watched several of those. I've watched Guff County. I've watched Martin County, and I've watched, uh, uh, one school in West Palm Beach. From there, as I can tell, those other counties, the smaller counties, they bring the students up and give them a certificate in September, you know, August, September, after school starts, sometimes in that range. When you look at the list of those students who have made a, uh, a max score on that, uh, there, we have twenty-four at the elementary level, thirty-four at the middle, and ninety-six at the high school. Now, we probably couldn't bring the high school in here for, uh, because our facility's not big enough unless we move somewhere else. But I would like to propose to the board that, uh, something like this, that we bring the elementary and middle school, uh, students in, uh, and that we honor them with a certificate here at the board, and then we have high school students that we send something out and ask the principal to do that. And also, on the second page of this, we have those students who, uh, have increased two levels on the FAS test. And some districts honor those students as well in some way. What I would like to see us do here and propose to the board, and get your, uh, input on this, is that, uh, that we, uh, that the superintendent encourage principals to do this sometimes at, in the fall of the year. Now, what, the literature that I've read on this has said that, uh, what, what this does, it encourages, when you do it at the school level, it encourages others to try to get that, so they can earn that certificate. And we're all about academic excellence. And when I looked at this list, the number that increased, uh, four thousand four hundred and eighty-two students, isn't that remarkable? But you have to remember, when we start out with, uh, progress monitoring one, that those students haven't been taught that. So we're going to see a dramatic increase in progress monitoring two, when they are taught that. But when you get to three, you know, and they've been taught all the benchmarks, uh, then, uh, that's the point you're gonna see that, uh, remarkable achievement. We're all about academic achievement. Let's honor them in some way. You know, I know they're going to get a certificate from the commissioner bed. Sometimes in January, what, uh, if I was looking online at that, the various certificates that the kids were holding up, it's a letter from the commissioner on one side, and a certificate on the other. But other counties are doing this to encourage academic achievement from the front end, and that's what I would like to see us do. I would like to see this board bring those elementary kids up, those middle school kids, make sure that the principal's doing something at the high school level, uh, giving these certificates out. Uh, when you have something positive like that to bring to the board, it filters throughout the community. When you honor children, their parents, they, they talk about it, and they're their friends and neighbors and so forth. It's tremendous PR, but the important thing is that many districts believe, and I think we do here, you know, that that's going to help improve academic achievement. So I'd like some thoughts on the board from there.
I, I'm okay with it. I was more concerned what his thoughts were. Keith, because it's, it'll be on you on this. Do you have any problems with it?
No, he actually asked me, I believe it was last month, what I do. Um, I'm not big on memographed letters. Like, I mean, I think it's great that a student gets a memograph letter from the Commissioner of Education, but, you know, they're going out to literally tens of thousands of kids all throughout the state of Florida. I'm bigger on being able to personally be able to congratulate, um, with a handwritten letter, but I couldn't handwrite. I mean, I could, it'd just take a long time. Uh, I know Dana and I looked at it last year. I can't remember how many we ended up sending. It wasn't, it wasn't this many, so, um...
Might have to use one of the auto pins I hear about.
Yeah. Um, we have an electronic signature, but even that sometimes kinda loses its flair. But I do agree with Mr. Harold. Anything we can do that celebrates these young students that are performing at a high level, we certainly need to do. The other thing that I was sharing with Mr. Harold today is what I don't wanna do is block whatever may be some really good things going on at the school. So I need to find out exactly what we're doing, in particularly at the high school level, because that's where you had the number that you felt like, if I heard you correctly, might not be a good number to have, that mean a hundred kids come to the school board meeting. Um, but I also don't want that to be an excuse for why we don't do something. So let's, let's, let's figure it out. Um, we've got till, like you said, September maybe, to come up with a good solution. But I do believe it needs to be recognized. I can talk to our high school, middle school, elementary school directors. They can get where their principals know exactly what's going on at the school level. But I do believe that, you said twenty-four?
And thirty-four for middle school. And some of those may be duplicates because, you know, they may earn it in two areas, yeah.
I can certainly do that, uh, make that happen for you.
Tom, you got my support.
Yes, I do, I do support this. I think it's wonderful. I think we do, like the superintendent mentioned, we need to celebrate these children. But it also incentivizes to other kids, and have them reach a goal and say, "Oh, I'm gonna try to do this for next year." Um, I think it's wonderful. I think we need to pursue that. Thank you.
Anybody else? What's, what's Fesco?
Yeah, I, I agree with it. If we don't celebrate academics, then why are we here? Period. And, and just as we do our athletics, which are very important, and our fine arts and everything else. But, but this is the core reason that we are in existence. So I am in favor of this. Um, whatever group or committee you have that looks at doing this, that, you know, I, I would like to participate if I can. Um, the high school level, to me, is the one that, that, you know, at, we actually need to do something a little bit more for. Because typically, they're not the ones who get the recognition. At the elementary, you have the parents, the teachers, the administration are, are more warm and fuzzy, as we say. At high school, you kinda get something passed to you, and that's it. So I, I was thinking something along the line that, even if we went to every one of our seven major high schools, however it worked out, the numbers, to go as a group and have them called forward, and, and, you know, like morning announcements, the following students report to the front office. Um, and, and whether we did an ice cream party for them, or, you know, cupcakes or whatever, but then have it announced that these students are being brought forward to, for this purpose. Just an idea there, too, but...
Thank you, Mr. Harold, for bringing this forward. Anything we can do to honor our students and spotlight them, I think is great. So I'm in agreement with supporting this.
Can I, can I make one more statements here? Uh, so what I hear you saying is, you're gonna get with your staff, and we're gonna try to do something for this in maybe September, yeah?
Yeah, 'cause, remember me telling you, I was trying to figure out what we had done last year. Some days I can have trouble remembering what I did yesterday.
Yes, sir.
I believe what happened last year, and I can't tell you if it was all ninety-six, or if it was a hundred, Abraham. There was a letter that was sent from our district school counseling division to each of those students that scored the max score from me. But it sounds like you either wanna bring them here, or if that's not feasible, that that letter be from myself and all of you. Which is, it's already occurring, so it's just a matter of adding some names.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And the next item was mine. As, as you know, we're part of the Florida School Board Association for the State of Florida, where, um, I've served as the representative for Escambia County. And myself and Mr. Harold had an opportunity to go to Tampa this past week, June eleventh through the thirteenth. And I just wanna give you a debriefing of some of the things we experienced in the meeting with the other counties from around the state. Uh, one board, uh, that I'm on is the Florida School Labor Relations, um, Service Board, which is chaired by Marcus Chambers, who is the superintendent of Okaloosa County. Kevin Watson is the executive director of that, that organization. And I just wanted to let you know, he praised our HR department under the leadership of Ms. Cross, Ms. Adams, and also our negotiator, Caroline Gray, of what a great job and representation that they do for Escambia County. And that was said in front of everybody in, in the entire state of Florida. So, um, we do have a great team, and I appreciate you, Ms. Cross, for what you've done, and Caroline, for your negotiation. Now that I got the good news out of the way, I can tell you the bad. In that meeting, Florida, the Florida School Labor Relations, um, proposed, uh, increasing, uh, membership dues. It had not been increased over the last nineteen years. Uh, the dues were thirty-one hundred dollars, and it proposes to move up to thirty-nine hundred dollars, which is an increase of eight hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for membership dues. Uh, breakout sessions that I attended, uh, talked about the U.S. Department of Education, uh, changes, and the ni, the one hundred and nineteenth Congress spending and policy legislation that affects school districts in Florida, there's extensive talk about, uh, the, how it was gonna affect Florida. Florida's pretty, in a pretty good situation financially, because we've been able to take care of our education system for many, many years. But still, it was a, it was a hot topic. AI in education. Pasco County has this streamlined communication at twenty-four hours. It's called a chat box, that they gave real-time responses to parents and stakeholders. There's something, uh, new that's happening across the state, and AI is a very positive, um, not positive, but a very, uh, strong entity that's coming. So I think that's something we, we need to eventually, uh, start talking about, is our, uh, AI in education is gonna affect us here in Escambia County. In the general session, there was one person who talked about, uh, strategic planning, Tim Weismer. Uh, he's the director of Florida Realtors, and gave a really inspiring speech. And, and when he was talking about the strategic plan, I, I was very proud to say that, um, Escambia County has addressed its strategic plan, and they're following it. Uh, not so many other, uh, counties around the state are in a good situation like we are. So whenever we go to this conference, you, you learn a lot, and then sometimes you, you feel pretty good about yourself because you realize your county is doing a, a pretty good job, um, compared to other gigantic counties around the state of Florida. So that was my take. Mr. Harold went as well. I didn't know if you wanted to mention anything about, uh, what he experienced as well.
Just a few comments here. One of the things that was very nice about the conference was, there was a lot of superintendents there. Uh, and, uh, you get to also network with superintendents and get some feeling for things, for other, how other counties are handling things. And I agree with Mr. Williams that, uh, when, uh, we're talking about these, uh, subjects there, the various subjects that we all face, all sixty-seven counties, uh, we're doing very well in that respect. So the, this, this county is doing well. Uh, I think Santa Rosa County had, uh, four of their five board members there, and the superintendent. Uh, and, uh, the one on strategic planning really struck a nerve with me, as Mr. Williams said that I was in that session, and, uh, that particular one, we're, we're out in front on that. So that's, that is a good thing. The superintendent and his staff and others need to be commended for that. I attended one on how to manage a meeting, and, uh, I listened to all of the things that they were saying, and I was checking them off, so, Mr. Williams, you do a good job with that.
I don't know, sometimes Ms. Adams and Mr. Fesco make my job hard up there.
So after checking off about four or five things, I said, "Maybe I should've found me another one." But it's a good one. And I also attended the one about the U.S. Department of Education, and, uh, I was going through all the different scenarios. And, uh, when you got to the, the end, the bottom line is, they're, they're probably gonna do away with it, you know? It was the kind of feeling, but it's gonna take, uh, some legislation and other things to do that, but, um... And, um, the one on, uh, AI, uh, that was pretty good. Uh, I enjoyed that one. Uh, and then the one on data from the Florida, uh, Chamber of Commerce, that was outstanding. If you go to their site, you can, uh, pull up all sorts of data from all over the state to use in the decision-making process, so that's pretty well it. It was a good conference. Uh, it was a short one. It was a day and a half for me. I know Mr. Williams was there was a little longer, because he's on some of the boards there, uh, and in the Board of Directors. But, uh, it was good. It was worthwhile, and I gained valuable information. And thank you for, uh, for, uh, being there also, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir. Um, next we move on. Mr. Superintendent, uh, year-end preliminary academic review.
Yep, and I'll ask Mr. Bobbitt to come forward and take us through preliminary results from the academic year, uh, speaking of celebrating performance in academics being our number one priority. Really do appreciate Jim and the work that he does, along with many other individuals within our district. So Jim, we'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, everybody. Um, this is actually the first time I've been able to do it this way, um, since I've got this job, because it's the first year that we've had two years in a row consistent. So, um, I'm taking us through how our data compares with ourselves from last year. We are still waiting for the official state data to be released, and we're still also relate, waiting for the, um, alternative assessment for the, um, students with disabilities. Those scores have still not been released, so we don't have an overall grade yet. Um, so those are still pending. So, starting out, this is a comparison of our, uh, average proficiency by grade level, um, from third through tenth in, uh, ELA. And you can see that for every grade level, we are above where we were, either the same, uh, for a couple of grades, or above where we were last year.
Are you waiting on comments?
I was kinda watching people's eyes. Um, I did wanna point out that we have, uh, it's been interesting. We've talked about how that fifth grade group moving through has been a very strong group because of, of the end of COVID and the testing. Um, you can see the big jump in sixth grade, but also there wasn't a drop in fifth grade, which is amazing, because we've been watching that all year long, and we've been seeing a decrease in fifth grade. And at the end, they managed to match last year.
So is the sliding scale the same as it was last year?
Yes, sir. It's the same, same as last year.
Good.
Yeah. Oh. Um, and now we can see that the learning gains, um, I did, there were a couple of little drops, um, but not much. And third grade, remember, the only students that can make learning gains in third grade are the students who are repeat third graders. So that was a little drop, but it was still in the seventies that those students made learning gains. But you can see that, um, we, we see increases through most of the grades in learning gains as well.
For the public, 'cause they, they forgot it in their mind that this, students take a test, it's A, B, C, you know? But this is a little bit more complicated on how they figure out scores, right?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, it's, uh, the, it's, these are bran- Uh, yes, sir. Um, it's, uh, the, it's, these are branching tests now. And so when a student gets a question right, they get a slightly more difficult level of question. If they get it wrong, they get a slightly lower level. And it's more about the number, the level of the questions the students get right than the number of questions they get right. Um, I had a phone call from a school with a parent concerned, and I knew this was going to happen. Um, they had two students who had the, according to the report they got from the state, had the exact sum, number of points correct. But one student had a four and one had a two. So it was about the level of questions that one student had versus the other.
Perfectly good sense, huh?
Well, think of it like basketball, uh, shooting a free throw being worth one point, shooting a three-pointer being worth three points. So some questions are worth more than others. Moving on to math, and this is only through eighth grade because at this point, once you pass the eighth grade test, you're moving into algebra, geometry. And again, you can see that we had growth across all grade levels, uh, in proficiency. And I know the seventh grade looks low, but remember the seventh grade students that are proficient take, mostly take our accelerated seventh grade tests and they're taking the eighth grade test now. So they're not included with the grade seven testing. Those are students who were mostly non-proficient the year before, so they're moving towards proficiency. And then for learning gains, we see the same thing. So moving on to the EOC testing with, uh, middle school and our high school algebra. Um, I do anticipate based on these numbers that our middle school algebra should be above the state average middle school algebra this year. And our high school will be coming close. Learning gains, um, we are, um...
Go back one, alright. Forty-nine and forty-seven in geometry and that three percent.
It's a rounding difference. Uh, one rounded up, one rounded down and so it...
I, I know I'm not a math person and you are.
It was above two-point-five difference, so it rounds. Uh, learning gains, we did see a drop in geometry. Um, we're already looking at how to address that to make sure that we correct that moving forward. Um, we did see a big change in, uh, high school algebra, um, with learning gains and proficiency. Um, we, we know that a lot of the students coming into high school are coming in non-proficient algebra. But we, um, were giving, uh, students that were our most struggling students actually a, um, not a remediation class, a separate math class that actually supported them. Um, and we, that's a, something we tried and it seems to have worked very well for the high schools. Uh, science? Little bit of drop in fifth grade, but again, last year, we, this is where we did see a little bit difference with last year's fifth grade to this year's fifth grade. Anticipating seeing in other areas, but we saw it here a little bit. And we now have eight, uh, most of our middle schools, all but one are offering biology. So that biology is a combination of middle school and high school, but it is up overall between both. Social studies is both up. We were a little bit worried about science and social studies this year because this is the first time that those subject areas also had branching tests for the first time. And so we did not see a drop in proficiency with those new tests.
And same thing with US history. It was rounding up sixty-four to sixty-nine. I figured that I wanted to ask.
This time it went the opposite direction.
Okay.
And I think you will like this slide. This is right now, very tentative. We still have seniors who are taking courses and taking, um, tests this summer. So these numbers may go up even higher than what we're seeing, but you see an increase across the board. And I will throw one caveat on this. Um, we've been using a new test, the CLT, as approved as a concordant test. Um, they did announce that they will be raising those concordant scores and affecting the rising eleventh graders for the future. And it will, will have an impact. So they have raised the concordant scores. Won't affect next year seniors, but the following years. It really helped us, this group. And this year's graduation affects next year's school grade. So this will not show up in this year's school grade. It'll show up next year. But last year was up above the year before, so we've, three points each year is what it looks like is the least. So now I have a breakdown by school of the total points they've earned so far. This is on fast for elementary and fast and best for middle and high. Um, so this is, gives an idea of how many points difference we've either gone up or down from last year overall. And again, this does not include the alternative assessment. Um, so those we factored in, so still not, and it doesn't have the official from the state numbers. So it's not a projection of the school grade. It's just a comparison of where we were last year to this year. Because last year, the alternative test did not count at all.
What went on with Brad?
Um, I would have to talk with the principal to know exactly what happened, you know, in an individual school. Uh, but we did see a drop. Uh, they scored very high last year, so they came down a little bit. But it could be anything from learning gains. It could be teacher change. It's, you know, hard to say without looking to the principal. It takes a few slides to get through elementary. Sorry, um, I'm thinking. Turn to my boss. Remember exactly, because we round. And like I said, this does not include FAA. And this is why I'm not talking about school grades because there are some schools that this will affect their school grade. Because they're right on that boundary.
I understand. You have some missing information on this.
We have no way of rejecting that information.
In my own mind, as I look through this list, what it takes to move up. Sorry.
It's different for elementary and secondary, so...
And naturally, I'm like the other board members. We're all looking at our own district here. Or we're looking at the whole, uh, the whole, the whole school district, but we're looking at our individual district.
Taking out schools, yes, sir. I do anticipate overall, we will see an increase in the number of A and B schools. How many? It's going to depend on those FAA results because literally we have schools who have the exact right number to be a certain grade. And FAA scores could drop them a little or it could raise them a little. So can't really know until then. And hopefully they'll be out soon.
And Ms. Bobbitt, you say soon. What can you estimate when?
Before August? I'd say, um, I, I can say is soon at this point. Um, I, uh, talked with Mr. Haiswinkle this morning and he called down there and did not get an answer.
One example that, because I've looked at all of this and I'm the one who asked Mr. Bobbitt just to give it to it in points because there's too many other variables. But like in Leno Park, you can see there was a forty-one difference, forty-one point difference. Yet, all the variables show that they would still earn an A with five hundred and thirty-three points.
Uh, four hundred and ninety-three.
Four ninety-three.
For an A. Like I said, these will be affected depending on the school and how many students they have by FAA. Um, I, I know one school, um, we've talked before about their subgroup, the SS subgroup. Um, we're not really even projecting those because one high school has a third of their students with disabilities still pending their scores. So that, their score could go anywhere at this point. Last slide for...
Mr. Bobbitt, are we going to get, uh, when do you anticipate we'll get a, uh, definitive information on this?
By August.
By August?
That's the best I have right now.
And is this report here available to, uh, in a hard copy now or, or an electronic copy that board members can come back and refer to?
I believe this is shared with you.
Okay.
And these are, remember, these are unofficial results, me comparing where we were last year to this year. Um, when the state publishes the scores, they publish, um, the results by what they call all curriculum groups, which is students that don't necessarily affect the school grade. All students who test. So their, their numbers will be different usually. But this will be affecting our school grade. Whoops. There's middle school. Yeah. Um, and I am anticipating possibly, the rule is once a level has seventy-five percent of the schools in that level make an A or B, they change the scale for that level. I'm actually anticipating a change for high school the next year, but we will not know that until the scores come out and they tell us. They were at seventy-two percent last year for high school. High school. There, there's still, yeah. Yeah. I, I, I have no problem saying there'll be an A at all.
What is the total point?
For high school, it's a thousand total points. Uh, so to be, for, for an A high school, it's six hundred and thirty-five. Six hundred and thirty-five.
Six thirty-five.
West Florida's definitely safe.
There's some significant improvements here or change, uh, in, in the high school level, significant, uh, when you look at this.
I would say over all the districts, every cell will be up in high school. Uh, because our, we know our graduation's up. We know our acceleration is up from last year and it's going to be up higher even this year. So, um, looking at the data, every cell should be up. Other questions? That's where we are compared to where we were last year.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt.
Ms. Harold.
Thank you, Mr. Bobbitt.
And Ms. Fesco.
Mr. Williams, I, I, I had called Mr. Bobbitt several times this last week and, uh, he is so easy to work with. He, I, I said, I don't want you to do something that is going to take a lot of your time because I know you're busy with scores and things. And he said, well, that's what I do and I'll have it to you by this date. And two days before that, I get it. So I appreciate it. What I'm trying to do is commend you, Mr. Bobbitt, for, uh, for helping me. He, he's the one who, uh, sent me the, uh, number of students who made max scores. And so, uh, naturally, uh, he's our data person. So thank you, Mr. Bobbitt, for doing that. And thank you for doing it in a timely manner before you said you were even going to give it to me. I appreciate it.
Well, I do want to point out that, um, I cannot do my job without the help of, um, Mr. Haiswinkle, Evaluation Services, the whole team, and also, um, uh, Mr. Doug Dillard and his team. That, that's what makes my job easy is I can get the information because they make it easy for me.
I just wanted to take this opportunity, thank you for doing what you do and, and doing this. And I know that although this happens once in a while for the board, this is a regular thing that you do with the people who need this information on a daily basis. Um, it doesn't happen all the time, but I look here and I, I'm looking at those, uh, in the back row who have their heads down, continuing to work as meetings go on. And I know that the work that our directors are doing with the schools and assisting the principals and teachers, uh, I appreciate it very much and I commend you. And you don't always get a lot of recognition, but you sure do deserve it. So thank you all.
Yeah, um, sure. Um, great job and, uh, and I feel the same with other board members, especially for our educators that are out there working this. But it's good for them to be able to see if they're ahead or behind or how they're going to go. So, um, Mr. Leonard, good job getting his data to where it's, uh, making a difference. So, and to the staff, thank you for what you've been doing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Before we move on, we're going to recess for about, around ten minutes.
With board agenda?
That's, that's not a, that's not really a legal question.
Okay, okay. Well, Elizabeth, don't matter if either one.
I would, I would think that if the, this is not a legal opinion either. Um, but I think if it's gonna be in an item where the board is providing direction to the superintendent, then it should be on the board's.
Board agenda.
Agenda, not on the superintendent's agenda. Okay.
Okay. And I'd probably give you part of the name there. You wanted Elizabeth's direction, board directions to the superintendent. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Adams, and I understand the things that I brought up would be something that we consider later in the policy. What, what we're considering now or will be considering is simply what you put forth. But, uh, and I think several of us, Mr. Fetzko and Ms. Bregash did the same thing. We're wanting to ensure that the, our policy has changed and it's, uh, and those things that we mentioned in the discussion before. So I understand. Thank you, Whitman.
Okay. And now, uh, this brings us to item three on the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, any additions or comments?
The only other thing we wanted to make certain we did for you today was to have Mr. St. Seer go through a little bit of the budget of Mr. St. Seer.
Okay. Good morning again, board. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, thank you. I'm gonna go over the current year. I wanna give you the reality of the current year. We've talked about it, um, all year long. It's just been a tough year. Uh, next year doesn't look like it's gonna be any better and probably a little bit worse. Uh, so I wanna go over, um, first we'll go over this budget status update of two thousand twenty-five. Keep in mind that, uh, this is work in progress still. We won't have two thousand twenty-five closed for three months. We'll be probably two and a half months continuing to work on two thousand twenty-five and get it closed, uh, and ready for AFR. And, uh, and then of course we'll start working on the annual comprehensive financial report right after that. So it just builds all the way up through, uh, almost right at the Christmas break. So it's just a constant process. But as far as closing this current year physically, we're a couple of months away. I'm gonna give you an update of what it's looking like. This is projecting without any, um, any work to make it better. Uh, so there's still a lot of things that we have to do, a lot of revenue that's gonna be unaccounted for now that will be accounted for a little bit later, not a lot, but some. Um, and then some expenditures that we'll try to make fit somewhere else in another fund so that it looks a little bit better. And I'll explain that a little bit better as we go through. Okay. So this is current year. This is, uh, our student population. You've seen this slide before. We started out the year total forty thousand two forty-six, which includes fifty-one, uh, forty-one hundred twenty-five family empowerment scholarships and fifteen hundred charter schools. Um, the, uh, traditional schools up at the top, thirty-four two thirty-three point six. So just kinda stripping out most of the stuff, looking at traditional schools. We went from current, from the beginning of the current year to third calculation, which was, which accounted for October survey and projected February survey. We had a decrease of about two hundred and seventy-eight unweighted FTE. Now, we don't have, we don't even have fourth calculation yet. DOE is still working that up, which will encompass the actual survey three in February. So that, those numbers will update. I'll get those, once we get the information. All right, you saw this, um, a couple of times ago. This is the flow from two thousand twenty. This is the shutdown year till projected two thousand twenty-six. Well, I haven't updated the chart, but I'm gonna give you some updated numbers, uh, based on the legislature. We got the revenue on Friday night. Uh, did a lot of looking at it this morning before this meeting and updating a few things. But the number out to the far right at the bottom, forty-one six six eight, that was our projected. That's what we thought we were gonna have. DOE is working with forty-one four ninety-nine. Forty-one four ninety-nine, a, uh, a little bit lower amount of unweighted FTE. On the, and some of that is family empowerment scholarships. So the scholarships, we thought, projecting into the new year based on DOE's information, DOE's early information, sixty-two hundred and thirty-four scholarships. You'll see that on the scholarship line out to the far right. Well, now they're projecting for the first FEFP calculation of current, of two thousand twenty-six, fifty-nine ninety-six point seven five. So there's a decrease in DOE's projection of the family empowerment scholarships. Uh, with a little bit of change there, we're probably gonna bring down our traditional, bring up our traditional forecast that we had at thirty-three seven sixty-two on the top line, far right, thirty-three seven sixty-two. Looks like that'll be, uh, in the neighborhood of thirty-three thousand, um, eight thirty-two, thirty-three thousand eight thirty-two. So that's just what it looks like off the first calculation, which is based on projections. All right, just wanted to update some of those FTE numbers. And again, once we get the fourth FEFP calculation, which is real, is very late, is a couple of months late, then we will, uh, update what actually happened in the current year for our student population. All right, these are projected expenditures for the current year and backwards to two thousand twenty-two. The, uh, final expenditures and then projected two thousand twenty-five expenditures. Change from the prior year is at the right-hand column. So for current year, we're projecting without working it up at all. There's a lot of work to be done to try to make this better as we, uh, just go through our counting, our, our fund transfers and different things like that. Thirty, three hundred and ninety-seven million, thirty, three hundred and ninety, three hundred and seventy-nine point two million projected. Prior year, three hundred and forty-nine point seven, for a change of about thirty, thirty, twenty-nine point five million increase in expenditures over the prior year, just under thirty million increase in expenditures over prior year. Now, the next slide, now you can see the categories, salaries, benefits, on down, uh, or the changes. Uh, these are preliminary again. So salaries and benefits are the main reason that we're, uh, significantly over prior year in terms of expenditures, and that's to be expected somewhat. About eight and a half to nine million of that is salary increases, the raises for the current year. And the rest of that i- is the number, is the personnel increases that came, a lot of them came from the federal in the prior year to the current year. All right, so the next slide, I'm gonna break the salaries down a little bit more. Uh, administrators, classroom teachers, other certified instructional, uh, teacher aides and bus aides, uh, other support staff, um, the board and attorney. So here's the split of the salaries, not benefits, but salaries, salaries only. The change in the salaries, contract salaries only, contract salaries only. Not overtime, not extra pay, just contract salaries, a change of about twenty point three million dollar increase over the prior year. The biggest change is on those teacher aides and the bus aides. Especially on a ratio basis. The reason is we had so many of those salaries that we were charging the federal that we had to bring back. And those are disproportionately, uh, higher than the other, um, salary types. Okay? Classroom teachers, other certified instructional, those are both on the instructional salary schedule. That's the extent of the instructional salary schedule. Other certified would be the media, uh, guidance counselors, those types, um, of support to the classroom teachers. All right, this is the revenue. So in two thousand twenty-two, the revenue, this is total revenue, general fund, total revenue. All of this is general fund. Total revenue, three hundred and nine million, two thousand twenty-two. That includes transfers from capital outlay to cover eligible costs. The, um, progression up to two thousand twenty-five projected, three hundred and fifty-seven point seven million. About a four point two million dollar increase over the prior year. Now that will continue to grow some. We might get a little more tax revenue, ad valorem tax revenue that was budgeted. We only budget ninety-six percent. So in our required local effort, uh, we, we may get ninety-eight percent or ninety-seven and a half percent in the current year. So that number will go up and help the revenue. So there's, there's still plenty of things that, that could happen. All right, now, just putting it together with the expenditures. Let's look at the change in fund balance. That's going to occur when you put these things together. So in the top row, the, this is the revenue. The next row are all the expenditures. Net change in fund balance for current year would be a negative twenty-one point five million with those numbers unadjusted. Beginning fund balance, July one was forty-five point nine million. Ending fund balance, the June thirtieth, would be twenty-four point four million with no adjustments. And we do scramble to make as much as we can, uh, make that better, as much as we can from an accounting side standpoint. You see the split of the various categories in the fund balance? There's non-spendable, there's restricted, there's assigned and unassigned. The assigned and the unassigned are considered, those are the only two categories that are considered unreserved. Because the assigned and the unassigned are not legally, um, restricted by either statute, uh, board rules or some sort of a grant requirements or anything like that. We can, the assigned, an example would be school budgets. Those are assigned. That's the category of it. They have a designation, but they don't have a legal undes, uh, a legal restriction on them. So those in an emergency could be utilized at a district level. The others could not because they have a statute, statutory or DOE or categorical purpose. So the twenty-four point four million dollars as a projected any fund balance and the assigned and unassigned totaled against general fund revenue. The financial condition ratio, which we talk about a good bit, would be about four point four percent. All right, uh, last year, that financial condition ratio was nine point six seven. So there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done to this general fund to get at least some mitigating, uh, change to the decrease that we're seeing in the fund balance. Which tells a real story that we've talked about many times. We're just, uh, it's decreasing in population, the revenue decrease or doesn't grow as much or decreases. And the expenditures just, uh, it just can't keep up with the decrease in the student population. All right, here's some, we've talked about, there was a lot of talk about, I think last board meeting or so, teacher salaries. And I want, I wanted to give you a visual of teacher salaries, the, um, millage rates and, and mainly some of the voted millages, district-wide, that are dedicated to salaries, where we stand in all of this. So it's ranked in order, it's sorted from top to bottom. So Monroe is the high on the average salary. Monroe is seventy-three point, seventy-three thousand two forty-four. They have a one point zero five voted millage dedicated to salaries. They also are a very high property, high-valued property district. So you see where I have a column out called the original required local effort that comes from the first calculation, three point zero six nine is their assigned original required local effort. They generate so much through the local based on property values that they exceed the state maximum of ninety percent local funding cap. The, the local portion cannot exceed ninety percent of the per pupil funding. So if you look at the RLE column, about the fourth one over from the left, the fourth one over from the left, their real required local effort had to be adjusted by the FEFP calculation to one point zero six two so that they did not exceed the ninety percent. So if you see anything out where it says original RLE, those are districts that are high-value property tax, high-value property, and they had to back off of the RLE to not exceed the ninety percent local cap. Capital millage portion is, uh, right next to the voted debt service column. Monroe levies one point zero capital outlay. The reason they do that instead of one point five is they generate so much, just like we just said. They generate so much in property taxes that they can afford to back off of that. The rest of them, uh, in that original RLE, there are several of them who reduced their capital millage to less than one point five, but some that don't. The rest of the state is pretty much one point five. You'll notice in the half-cent sales tax column, those are the districts that have a half-cent sales tax. So I'll go down to the next page on this, same concept. Escambia is forty-five on this scale at fifty thousand nine thirty-six. This is straight out of DOE's data. Anybody can look this up. So are there any questions or comments? I just wanted y'all to have this because we're getting ready to go into tax, um, millage rate, um, season, and we're gonna see where we stand on that, see what we need to do there. Gulf County is on the capital, point seven eight six. Their reason is the same as Monroe. They're a high, high district, high-value property tax, property district. They afford to back off of the, uh, one point five. They do have a voted millage for, um, dedicated to salaries. So I've highlighted all the columns. That, this is just information. This is not advocacy. But I want you to see all the data. Who has and who does not have a voted millage dedicated to salaries? And if there's any reason why somebody, some district's salary is less than another, you might need to look at that. Just to see where they stand. Uh, one of the first ones I knew about years and years ago was, um, was Walton County. I had a, one of my, one of our, um, P A E C districts. Him, uh, told me, he said, we're gonna levy, we're gonna send it to the voters for salaries. I think these last, uh, four years before they go back to the voter, I believe. Think I'm right on that. So there's always a little bit of a chance, sometimes a great chance, that that thing might get voted down and you're stuck with a bunch of salaries that you can't pay for. Okay? All right, so that's that. Any questions or comments on that?
Yes, sir. You've mentioned right at the very end, the districts that have the, a, uh, tax to pay salaries, but if it was not voted on, how long do those referendums go?
Uh, I believe it's four years.
Four years.
Four years and they have to go by.
There is a potential that then, okay. Now I'm skipping back to the very first page. And on the first page that you, you had the traditional schools, uh, the decrease. And when we're talking FTE, I'm talking, when I see that, I'm thinking students.
Right.
Each student's one FTE. So in the traditional schools, we've lost two hundred and seventy-eight students. But the family empowerment has gone up nine hundred and twenty-two. So that's like a six hundred and some higher new kids that they didn't get from us. Uh, is that because of, I, I, or, or what, what is the reason that they could go up that high, but they're not coming out of our schools?
I think they are coming out of our schools.
Well, but if we're only losing three hundred, two hundred and seven.
Well, not all of them, but I think many of those that we lost did go.
Right, but, but that's still gonna give six or seven hundred that, that are now in the family empowerment. And I, and my first thought is, okay, are these previous private parochial kids who haven't asked for the money until now?
That's what we assume. Or homeschoolers.
Okay.
There's a lot of homeschoolers getting that scholarship too.
Okay. That's, that's a significant number. That's, you know, in the one and a half elementary schools or a middle school, I mean, that, that's a lot of kids. It, it's scary. And, and the, uh, thing here is that when you look at the totals, you had the forty thousand two hundred four, forty-six in twenty-four, twenty-five second calculation, but a third it went up. So, you know, when, if you're looking at it as a total enrollment kind of thing, it looks like we're really growing.
Uh, that's right.
We're not growing.
That's right. And that's been a lot of the problems with the scholarships. And we thought they might do something different this year and pull them out of the calculation, but they left it in. They've left it in another, another year. But yes, it is very deceiving. It looks like we're a growing traditional school district, but we're, we're declining traditional and growing in total because of the scholarships.
Mr. Chair? And, um, and me and Superintendent has talked about this. At some point, you gotta right-size the district. Easy things pass on tax increases to your citizens. The hard thing is right-sizeing your district like we should do. So, um, if this pattern keeps continuing, that's, that's what we need to do.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. St. Seer.
Okay, I got, let me give you one more. We've got one more, Mr. Williams.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, this is, uh, preliminary tax roll. There you go. Okay, preliminary tax roll, Ju- June one, thirty-five point eight billion. This will be very close to what July one is certified at, thirty-five point eight. Now, using that number, and by the way, DOE used, DOE used, um, thirty-six point, thirty-six point four in the calculations, thirty-six point four billion. So their tax roll estimate was much higher than what, uh, our property appraiser has given us, uh, for preliminary June one. So they're used, uh, a much higher tax roll, not a much higher, but somewhat higher tax roll to make the FEFP calculation for first calculation. That would change a little bit on the per pupil funding. That means that, uh, they're showing that the district would be funding more in required local effort than it probably will. But we'll see how those millage rates look when they, when they get them to us in July, second calculation. Now, um, can we blow that up a little bit, a little bit? Maybe one or two. Yeah, that, that, I think that'll be okay. All right, so I'm using the thirty-five point eight at the top, thirty-five point eight billion tax roll. Go down some. And I'm using the, uh, one point five mills for illustration. So that would generate fifty-one point six million in revenue. Fifty-one, that's, uh, on the revenue line, fifty-one point six million at one point five mills. This is, that would be the max. And then here are the, really the hard costs that we have to fund, that we must fund. We've got certificates of participation, zero, uh, twenty twenty, um, COPS series twenty twenty-three A and our projected twenty twenty-five A. Debt service on each one of those during the year. So debt service on each one of those. Then we have eligible maintenance costs that we would transfer from capital to cover general fund, uh, maintenance cost, eligible maintenance cost, four point seven million. So that'd be a transfer from, uh, capital millage to general fund. We would, and I'm projecting here because we need it, projecting eligible transportation costs to both so- salaries and benefits. That is a new category for, that we advertised last year and that we're going to advertise again. And that would generate, that, well, it would generate, uh, in this case, about fourteen million in transfers to cover those costs. So that's close to what the salaries for school bus operators for the district. Property insurance, we would transfer, I think Mr. Wyndham told me the other day, it's a little bit less than the seven million I've got there. That was, um, projected, I think, last year. I just left the number. So all of that would go into general. So we would transfer out of millage thirty-five point two million, either to debt service or general fund. Charter school portion, we would be at sixty percent of the allocation. It ramps up over five years to a hundred percent. So next year would be a sixty percent portion. Um, Beulah on down to Warrington. Total would be four hundred and, right at four hundred and seventy million. Going, I'm, four hundred and seventy thousand, go into charter schools for their portion of the two mil. Okay? For ERP systems to run all of our payroll, HR, um, curriculum, one point seven million dollars for the ERP system software. El- that is eligible for millage. Not all software is eligible for millage. It has to be ERP system software, about one point seven. Think we've got all of it. There may be a little that we need to add to it. Uh, this is a, just a general projection. Not sure how this is gonna wind up, but I'm just giving you some numbers. School buses, last year we had, uh, twenty-eight school buses at about four point five million. white fleet at about a million. Of course, Mr. Dennis is working, and his staff are working on all of this. The maintenance requirements, these are just some numbers that we had in last year that probably will be similar for the current year. About five million for maintenance and repair. Protection services had a, um, four hundred thousand in there and so on. So thi- this is incomplete. We haven't even gone over this yet. And so with the revenue and all of those things in it, there'd be about three point two million dollar excess, revenue over expenditures. Okay? Any questions on that? That's kinda, that's just a touch of what we're gonna be looking at with our millage funds. Okay? Alright, that's all on the current year. And then that was a little bit of new year. Just to touch base a little bit on the, uh, revenue that, that, uh, was released on Friday night, uh, for Scambia. Again, the projection was forty-one thousand, four ninety-nine. That's a five hundred, five oh five increase over current year. All of that increase is scholarship. Scholarship. Um, base student allocation, you don't have this, I'm just going by, 'cause I haven't had time to, I wasn't gonna give you anything, 'cause I didn't have time to, to really verify everything. But just some, uh, some key components. Base student allocation increase, forty-two dollars over the pro- current year, about, uh, point seven eight percent. Point seven eight percent. The, um, the perp, the total per pupil funding for the district, and it's close for the state, state's a little bit more. Total per pupil funding prior to any adjustment for family empowerment scholarship was one point three seven percent. If we don't see at least a three percent increase, we know we're in trouble. We're gonna probably go negative, and that's what's gonna happen next year. We're gonna go negative next year again. Uh, so there, there has to be some, some things that worked out. We talked about executive session. I mean, there's no room for salary increases. We would have to intentionally draw down fund balance, which is already gonna be drawn down in the current year for salary increases. That's just the reality of where we're at. Um, after adjustments for family empowerment scholarships, new revenue may be in the neighborhood of a million dollars. Only about nine point five million when you include the scholarships. So, you know, there's not any room for anything. So we're gonna have to shove off as much salary as we can to the millage funds that are eligible now, especially with the bus drivers. This is the first for us, we've never done this before. Didn't ever wanna do it. We didn't wanna do this. It's a last resort, but that's, that's where we're at. We're gonna have to do it. We're gonna push them off as many, much as we can, bring in capital to cover those salaries. Okay? Alright, so we'll have much more on June thirtieth. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stansfield.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Mr. Superintendent?
No, sir.
Okay, we continue with our agenda. Uh, this coming tomorrow is, Mr. Harold, is your mind to bring the implication and pledge, I believe? Okay? Okay, this moves us into, uh, the minutes for May. We have, um, also administrative appointments and administrative reappointments. Yes, sir? Yes, sir, Mr. Harold?
Uh, on reappointments, I will be abstaining from voting and pulling one item, okay?
Okay, thank you. We have, uh, one item for first read, the student progression plan. Is there any comments on that, man? Okay, we move now into our consent agenda. Are there any items to be discussed, starting with, uh, curriculum? Items eight through nineteen, eight through nineteen. There is an item, I will speak on that, um, ten B, I'll be abstaining from voting. Ten B. Uh, as being a member of the Y M C A Board of Directors.
And there one that you need to abstain from as well, Mr. Fetzko? No, this was Dr. Colo. The V P K contract? What number? Just wanna be sure. Dr. Colo, he told me about it the other day.
Any more comments, or anything else need to be pulled from items consent agenda, uh, for curriculum eight through nineteen? I did mention, uh, Ms. Boswell, I'd be abstaining. Item's ten B. Uh, next we have finance, items twenty through twenty-four.
I would like to pull twenty-four C.
Okay. Any others? Moving to human resources. Items twenty-five through twenty-nine.
I would again like to pull twenty-five D, Delta.
Okay, twenty-five D. Good, operations, items thirty to thirty-nine. I'll be pulling item number thirty-one B.
And I just want to ask a question about thirty-two A and thirty-two F.
Okay. Any more from operations? If not, we move to consent superintendent's forty through forty-two. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, the Tate auditorium. So, we're doing it now? I didn't know if you were going through and then coming back, but we're-
Yeah.
Come back.
Talk about.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I figured too.
Uh, forty through forty-two? Okay. Now. Now we'll discuss these items tomorrow, did you wanna discuss them tonight, uh, today? Okay.
I wanted to discuss them today so I could get information and really not pull them tomorrow.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, Mr. Washington, on the Tate auditorium, uh, I thought that we were using the same template for all the auditoriums.
We are, sir.
But this is, this says that it's architectural and engineering, and so we're redoing the architecture, or?
No, sir, we're using, it's still prototypical. It's, it's just like when we did the covered play buildings. Uh, they, we have to pay them for the actual design work of it. Uh, there'll be slight modifications, so the brick, the front to make sure it matches the front of Tate High School, and then all of the civil, the geotechnical, all of that goes into that as well. So it's prototypical in the sense that the basic design is there and we get a discount for that overall design. We just do not, we're having to pay for the actual design of the building itself.
Okay, I, I just thought, hmm, we have it designed already, we have the blueprints, we have everything ready to go. Uh, that's an awful lot of money for-
It's an awful lot of money, but there-
Saying what color brick we're using.
It, it is, well-
It's not just brick, it's the site work as well. Every, every, when you position these things, there's different services going to them. You know, all the nuances associated with each unique site, along with, but he just, what he described, the design alignment. You don't wanna put a purple brick next to a school that's all red brick, that kinda-
Uh, uh, uh.
So there's, there's cosmetic stuff, but it is much more than that.
I just didn't understand what all it included.
Right, all your, all your interior, if you think of the inside of the, of the, the room itself and the inner workings of a stage and auditorium, those are prototypical. Your fly, when your fly lofts, your fly, all that stuff is prototypical.
This is dealing site work, this is dealing-
Site work and then the stuff that makes it align with the, with the property.
And you know Tate is, you know, Tate's, well, Tate's, I was gonna do this tongue-in-cheek, but Tate is a hundred years old, so there's a hundred years worth of infrastructure out there. We have to discern what all that is, where it is, where we're gonna get power, what we may have to modify, what we might not have to modify, those type of things. There's a lot of infrastructure discussion that's gonna go into that. So it'll be, it'll be done exactly as though, uh, we did with the covered play building. Each one of the sites is different. Um, we get a discount for the actual construction, uh, design, uh, which we've already paid for, but all the other stuff is associated with that. That also includes construction materials testing, uh, geotechnical engineering, uh, the civil site work, the stormwater, all of that goes into it as well.
And then, uh, thirty-two F has to do with the baseball field at West Florida High School.
Yes, sir.
Alright, and so we have bugs.
We have bugs.
And we're not just gonna kill them, we're just gonna remove all the sod and the bugs with them and hope the bugs don't come back to the new sod.
Right, as of about two weeks ago, I'd never heard of a ground pearl. And, uh, they are a invasive creature. Uh, they are, there is nothing in the United States that can kill them, uh, that's legal.
Alright.
So, uh, so what they're, what we'll do is we will remove that. They, the, to, to be clear, and this did some research from my staff, uh, these things move about four centimeters a year. So it's not like you can move them off and they're gonna come right back. It's not like fire ants, it'll run, you know, they'll, they'll beat you back to the field. Um, these things actually, once you eradicate, move, remove the soil, it's highly unlikely that they'll come back. Uh, University of Florida, just to be clear, University of Florida is very close to having something that will kill these things.
Alright. I, I just, I thought, wait a minute, 'cause, you know, we're gonna replace the whole field and there's no guarantee they won't be there.
That, now, that is true, but they're, we're working very diligently. If we go down about eight inches and take that out, it's a high likelihood it won't be there, because they have to feed on the roots, so anything down in below that, you know, below eight inches, there's very unlikely that you have any root system.
Alright, it just, it was strange to me, so I thought it'd-
It was strange to me too, sir.
I, I imagine the previous principal might've left that there to, I don't- I, I, just a thought, I don't know. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, before you walk off, the, um, so how much of the savings is it for us to have that master template?
Design review? I, I can't remember off the top of my head. I'll look it up and, and, and get it back.
I'm just curious, is it twenty percent or ten?
It's, uh, it's a, it's not, it's not forty percent, no, sir. Uh, I'll have to go back and look at what the contract said, I can't remember off the top of my head. But I'll, I'll send you, send you guys the information on that. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'll ask those questions tomorrow night, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Can do that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, item number forty-three, next item is the, uh, F S B A advocacy representative and alternate.
Having served this year, I'm willing to let somebody else have that opportunity. It, it, it really was very enlightening, I, I, and there wasn't a whole lot of time to do it, but, um, somebody who's really more into the legislative side of it, the governmental, might wanna-
Whether all is-
It, it involves at least two, like Zoom meetings, and, and then at the conference, there's typically a movie, a, a meeting of the advocacy group, and it, it talks about ways to advocate for public education. It de- deals more with what, interaction with the legislature?
Hmm.
Somebody would like to do that, I'd like for them to do it.
I'll put my hand in, try it.
There you go.
Okay. Yes.
Well, I'll do the alternate, 'cause you're already on so many things.
Yes, that's-
I'll be the alternate, but if you'll do it-
Okay, you help me out.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boswell, you have sent that information into F S B A? Okay, thank you, alright. Item number forty-four, moving into items for superintendent, media center services recommendation for removal.
You have any questions?
Yep, I know.
Okay.
Last item, there's one item, internal audit and, and internal reports, I mean inventory reports, yes. Hearing that, that brings us to our public forum. We have three speakers with three minutes each. Uh, the first person, I'm sorry, I can read your last name, B O W E? Is it Bowie? Bo, thank you. You have three minutes, sir.
Uh, good morning, or I think it's still morning. Keith Bo, uh, District Two, out of Warrington. Uh, what I'd like to address is on, I'm, I'm, I'm a member of the book review committee, and in it, there is a functional problem that I would like to address that hopefully you will take action on and make a correction. And that is, in the review process, you, we start out with a binary choice between the circle and the triangle. In the circle is where we feel that it should, a, a book should be removed entirely from the library. Now, the problem with that being binary in that regard, when we get to the triangle and decide what grade level we want, uh, books to be at, anybody that voted within the circle is now discluded from being part of the triangle. What I, what I would like to see is the top of the triangle to be books removed, because if you have a tie in the triangle, you have the different, uh, uh, upper high school, high school, uh, pre-high school and elementary school. Alright, well, if you want the book removed, but the book doesn't have the four votes or five votes to get it removed, your votes no longer count to what level you want that book in, at, in the school level. So if you have two votes to remove a book, but then the other six votes decide what level the book should be in, maybe you have one that wants it in elementary school, maybe you have two that wants it in ninth and tenth grade, uh, and you might have the, uh, remaining part saying it's okay if in the eleventh and twelfth grade. But if you include the, the books, it's, it's only logical that if you don't want the book in the library, you don't want it at a lower level in the library. So if we take that circle, which is to remove a book from the school library, put it at the top of the triangle, then you have, that will graduate into the upper level to the, the four vote, you know, you, in other words, we have eight votes, and, and it takes four votes, I believe, to remove a book. Maybe it's five votes to remove a book from the library. Alright? But if you don't have those votes to begin with, then you don't have a voice by voting to have it removed. You don't have a voice at what level you want it in the school library. And there's books that may be appropriate for eleventh and twelfth grade, but you don't have the sway from the people that didn't want it in there anymore. So in other words, what I'm trying to say is, instead of a separate circle and the, and the triangle, we should have just the triangle with the, the circle lit tight.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you for your-
That makes sense.
Thank you for your information, thank you. Next we have Leah Schultz. Schultz, three minutes. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Leah Schultz. I was just coming by to introduce myself today. Um, so I am the development coordinator for the Wildlife Sanctuary of Northwest Florida. Um, many of you may be familiar, some of you may not. We've been around since nineteen eighty-two. Um, and we provide a free service to the public, a wildlife hospital that anyone can come and bring injured wildlife to, and we'll take it in and do our best to take care of it and release it. We also offer educational programming. We are now working to expand this programming with the addition of my physician. I'm very excited about that. Um, but we offer, um, field trip programming. We also can come to, um, schools and do, bring raptors or do owl pellet dissections, really fun stuff. Um, so I wanted to let all of you know about that, that we're available as a resource, we work within budgets, um, and things like that. So just wanted to say hi today and hope you all have a great day.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, may I add something?
Yes.
I, I served on the board of the Wildlife Sanctuary for probably ten or fifteen years. And if you don't know about it, it's right around- And if you don't know about it, it's right around the corner from the McDaniel Building. Um, they offer free tours. You can walk through and see some of the most remarkable creatures. They have some captive populations that can't be released back into the wild. But the work that those people do on just very little money through the support of donors is truly remarkable. So congratulations and say say hi to everybody for me.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Uh, our final speaker, Mr. Rick Holnick, Holnicks, I'm sorry, mispronouncing. You have three minutes, sir. Holnicks.
I like the casual look. And I like what I heard today, a lot of what I heard today. Uh, we're moving in the right direction. We're trending in the right direction, but we're not there yet. You, sir, are right from District Five. We 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 haven't seen the beef yet on this stuff. Uh, I know you get it, uh, but now we need to see something happen tangibly. Uh, I I like District One, thank you for your leadership, sir. Uh, we need to remove those books on the state list and we need to remove it without review. Amen. District Two, apply the same statutes to the libraries to the classroom. Amen to that. Great idea. District Three, Mr. Chair, we have an opportunity to right this ship for the next decade. We do. Amen to that. District Four, amen also. Not just the acquisitions, but the donations, yes. And and I applaud you also stepping up to another position of leadership. Bravo. Sir, again, we're not moving fast enough. I agree one hundred percent. Judge Weatherall says the same thing. Now, as to you, sir. Now, there's safety in a multitude of counselors. These guys are giving you very good counsel right now, very good counsel, and you'd be wise to to heed it. The right number of books to be removed is not eighteen. That would be virtue signaling. It's a lot more than that. He's right on this. The books that have already been removed, pull them. We don't need to provide a political buffer to these guys right now. You know why? Because we got an Attorney General who gets it. We got an Education Commissioner who gets it. We got a State Board of Education that gets it. We got Judge Weatherall that gets it. You don't need cover. You don't need cover. This is the time to do the right thing, to protect the kids and to ensure compliance with Florida statute. That's what this is about. This is what's going to happen if it's anything less than four hundred books tomorrow or soon thereafter. You guys have watched the the Hillsborough Superintendent in the hot seat. They're going to ask it it with that with that parental office now, stuff is going to get funneled in there. Sir, we love you. We don't want you in that hot seat. They're going to ask you to read from one of the books that's not on your list of eighteen, from the other four hundred plus. They're going to say, could you read page one, paragraph one from this book? And you're going to say, I don't want to read this. It's disgusting. So take the lead, take the counsel, these guys, they know what they're doing. They're giving you good counsel and bring yourself into alignment with state leadership right now so we can affect change for the next decade and beyond. I applaud what you're doing. We got more work to do and I hope to see the start of that tomorrow, the first fruits of it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If there's nothing else, anything else?
Yes, sir. What Mr. Bo just said causes me to go huh? And and so I've got to question it now. So if you're on a book review committee, and I'm I'm looking at Bradley and I'm looking at the superintendent. If you're on a book review committee, and let's say that for purposes here, there are eight people on it. Two are voting to remove the book, but it the other six say no, so the book is retained. Those two who voted no don't get to continue to participate in what level the book is appropriate for?
What I did is I wrote down what he said because I know I went to Auburn, but he confused me when he talked about circles and triangles. I wanted to make sure I got back with Mr. Bo and I would talk, but not today. I wanted to make sure because I I don't think it's a ten minute conversation.
Right.
Yeah, I want to make sure I talked to him and to Bradley about the circle and the triangle.
Yeah, because I don't see somebody being somebody's opinion.
Well, he also said four votes to remove a book or keep a book. That would depend on who those four votes were in your current board policy. So I need to make sure I talk to him because we just listened to him for three minutes and I was confused too.
Well, I I think that there's a lot of things that what we develop as a policy and when we've seen this a hundred times when it comes to things that come from DOE. There's a there there is a statute or or whatever that comes to us for implementation. And what was written in the statute versus how it's implemented, don't jibe. And and what I'm hearing from Mr. Bo is what I consider to happen in the book review process doesn't jibe with what's apparently occurring in in that process. So I'll let you look into it first, Mr. Superintendent, but then then we'll have a conversation after. Thank you.
Mr. Williams, I want to remind everyone that the Foundation for Excellence Luncheon started at eleven o'clock. So in this meeting, though, if any of you want to go, I'm going to ride over there myself since Sam Jha was representative in that group, so.
Anything else?
Yes, I.
Yes, sir.
I am ready to go, but I want to make sure I tell you this so that you'll know tomorrow. I have limited mobility. So, you know, how we usually get out front and greet, y'all go right ahead on. But I'm going to sit right here tomorrow, but I'd like for you to be able to greet those new appointments. So I just want to be sure I said that out loud.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I I want to commend superintendent on the other weather, you know, and I had to tell him the other day that he needed to go home, you know, and get some rest. So we want to see you get better quickly and and try to get that rest. I know you're trying to handle a a big school district with a lot of issues, but, uh, be careful.
Yes. This meeting is adjourned.